Your order. Brokaw.
Trustee Marquardt.
Here.
Trustee Takaoaka.
Here.
Trustee Forster.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
Trustee Schenk.
Here.
Trustee Cook.
Here.
President Byrne.
Here. Okay, we have a court. Everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
...................................................
Okay, is there a motion to appoint trustee Cook president pro temp for this meeting?
I'd like to nominate trustee Cook to be president pro temp for the duration of the meeting.
Second?
Motion second. Brokaw.
Trustee Marquardt.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoaka.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye. Motion heard.
Okay, next item is citizens wishing to address the board on something other than what's on the agenda. Come on up.
Good evening, Albert Jacobs from the Vernon Hills Park District Commissioners. We're here tonight to pass out these lovely hats and thank you for the contribution of $400,000 to Finish Our Spray Park, which will be opening on July 20th. And we can't wait for it. We're very excited, so thank you.
I was trying to shake your hand, sir.
20th, Saturday, 11:00 a.m.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, and looking forward to the opening.
Can I also do just a shameless plug for Rib Fest after Vernon Hills Days for the 16th and 17th of August?
Yep.
Thanks for the village's support on that. That hat looks great.
Thank you.
Yes. And just echoing what Commissioner Jacobs said on behalf of the board and staff, just thank you to the village board and the staff for all your help on our spray ground. We're really excited. They fired it up today to get some water going. We're going to be testing it tomorrow with some young kids. But 11:00 a.m., Saturday, July 20th, we look forward to seeing you all out there in the public. Should be a good day.
Have it on the calendar.
Yes, thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other citizens wishing to address the board on something that's not on the agenda?
I don't know if I should sign in, but my name's Emily.
If you could, and you can do that when you're.
Yeah, yeah. My name's Emily Cadwell. I am very involved in the village with different youth athletics and the school system, but today I'm here because we've been, my husband and I have lived in Vernon Hills for the past 12 years, and within the past six months, we've had two disturbing events that I wanted to bring to the board's attention. We moved here because of the ease of access to parks, the walkability of the town, you know, the ability for our kids to ride their bikes everywhere. And in the past six months, my daughter has been hit by a car in the crosswalk twice. So once walking across the school, like from school, and once just riding her bike. I don't have a solution, but I was coming tonight because I can't, I don't, I know that I'm not the only one who's experienced this, but I don't know if it's just distracted drivers or if there's other things, but we just, I want to keep this town very walkable and very, you know, open to our kids being able to ride and walk wherever. And I just, you know, twice in less than the span of six months is very disturbing to me, so.
Specific, yeah, specific location?
So the first time she was hit while walking across from middle school north and the crosswalk with the lights flashing.
Hawthorne Parkway.
Yeah, so that one's a bad one. I know, speaking with the school, even the crossing guards have issues over there. So the school zone, it's used as a cut through to avoid 60 and everything, but the second time she actually was using, going across 60 at Lakeview, going on the path, but in the crosswalk during her allotted time, and was hit by a car turning right who admitted that he just didn't, didn't like, I don't know if he distanced here or wasn't paying attention. So, and I know that intersection just got redone to be more visible for, sorry, these kids are. So that, and that was just redone, so it's very visible, you know, that's a new intersection that is very evident, that the crosswalk is, you know, new, the lights are there, but, you know, just like, I have these two younger ones and an older one who also, they, I mean, the older one rides around all the time with his friends and she's the same. I just, I don't know if there's something we need to do as a village to, you know, I think, you know, we're only going to get bigger, we're only going to have more drivers coming through town. Is there some campaign that needs to happen? Is there something that needs to happen? I know the school, the schools aside, you know, are already amassed during the school days with drivers avoiding signs and like near misses, but I don't know what the solution is, so I just wanted to bring this to possibly find a solution or find a better way for our kids to keep safe and not, so we don't, I don't have to worry about getting another phone call that she's been hit by a car. So that's, that's why I was visiting for tonight.
You want to address this at all?
You know, I think that the solution starts with what you're doing, and it's Emily, I'm sorry, I missed your last name.
Cadwell.
So, you know, this is probably the most important thing is raising public awareness. I think, I think people in our community want to drive carefully, right? But there are a lot of distractions and perhaps hearing from you about how scary of an incident, how quickly a tragedy can happen is the start. As, as you mentioned, both of these locations are very well marked and designed. There's only so much engineering we can do, there's only so much enforcement we can do, but we can never stop impressing upon, and there are different campaigns that we do from, throughout the year, from time to time, to raise awareness, but I really appreciate you coming in, perhaps I could get your information, follow up with you later, because these stories, I think, sometimes impress people a lot more than seeing a police car with lights on or even a flashing light in an intersection, so.
Correct, yeah. And I do have to say the police were wonderful both times that it's occurred, they've been very, they responded beautifully, but, you know, one of the things, like I keep thinking of different ideas and like maybe it is something around school time, there is more of a pedestrian awareness campaign of sorts for the village, or, I don't know, something, I know we have signs up for, like when the fire station has there, you know, the gas and, and fires don't matter, you know, like all these different things. Is there, I don't know if there's something we do with that, but just getting, getting this awareness that, I mean, I know I'm not the only one who's had a school age child hit by a car, whether it's in the parking lot of a school or like riding around town. Thankfully, like, I mean, she's here tonight, so thankfully it's, it was minor on both occasions and she is still, you know, physically healthy, but I, I don't want it to get to a point where we're addressing something worse. So I'd rather address this preventatively than, you know, after a horrendous accident.
Of course. Thanks, Emily.
Well, especially as we get close to starting a school, we will do some stuff with the crossings by the schools, especially on Hawthorne Parkway with that being a four lane road.
Yeah.
We did, I do believe we ended up doing that, was it two or three years ago for an upgrade, but everything can be improved, or improved upon, so we'll take a look at.
So, thanks Emily, I'm glad your kids are safe. You know, I think one thing I'm willing to do, I could talk to superintendent Dr. Hanigan at the schools. I think we talk about, when we drive, we learn to be defensive drivers. We want to be defensive pedestrians in education with, with the, maybe they can help us with some education through the school districts and we can do stuff, right? I'm sure he'd be willing, and I know we have a lot of the princesses here too. I don't know if that falls into your lap a little bit, maybe educating too when you're at public events, you know, there's, you have an audience, you know, if you have an audience and a platform, you know, if that's something you guys want to do, I'm sure Chief Kreese and myself, we can help you guys with that, you know? It's finding the ability to educate the driver, and like Chief said, there's people they drive with, they have distractions, and we had one on Fairway a couple of weeks ago that, who I knew, no, excuse me, God forbid, no, and I know her mom is going to be coming in the next meeting, I think, to talk too, so we're very well aware and safety is always number one in our community, 100%, so thank you, Emily.
I do, just in response to Dr. Hanigan, I know he responded very nicely with like, they rerouted kids to make sure there was one specific crosswalk, but.
Yeah, but it's always, like, if there's an, I don't want to go back and.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I mean, there's always room.
Because it's public comment, we just, you know, and so it's, we'll, we'll talk to them and the education piece for the kids to make sure when it's safe to cross, that's what we want, out of school, out of school hours.
Yeah. I mean, that's, this is, the main reason I'm doing this is she did everything possibly right, like the only thing different, yeah, which is, that's where I get so scared is her only flaw is not being Wonder Woman and being able to push the car out, so, but I appreciate your time tonight. Oh, no, I, that's why, this is why I wanted, yeah. Yes, absolutely, no, I just wanted to just make sure that that was known, but yeah, I appreciate your time tonight, so thank you.
So, I have an idea, because I think I've seen it in other communities, so all down, can we put more signs, just, I'm talking not just by the school, but at the beginning, where Butterfield, all the way down to, you know what I mean, to say, hey, drives, just make people aware, kids present or something, or, you know, something to that nature. Are there signs like that that could be put along Hawthorne Parkway?
Yeah, it's something we can look at. You, you run the risk of putting up so many signs that people don't read them at all, but one thing we have, it's actually in the budget this year, is a pedestrian and bicycle master plan. There's actually a couple very, very timely things that we have in our capital program. One is the pedestrian and bicycle master plan, which we're hoping to get a consultant on board in the next several months, and that's going to be looking at kind of a comprehensive look at, at our, all of our sidewalks, our pathways, where do we want to see this town grow in the future? Under that same program, we're also going to look at crosswalk policy, you know, how should we sign individual crosswalks, where should we put lights, where should we, you know, the flashing beacons, where should we look at different types of treatments? And ADA accessibility kind of gets looped into that as well. In the other program, we have an intersection design RFP that's going to be going out. It includes a couple of different intersections in town, but that one specifically with Fairway, we're going to be doing a safety analysis at Fairway and Nike and Fairway and Cougar. We've had some complaints and some issues about the safety of those crossings, so it is, there is work in play to start looking at this comprehensively within the village. So hopefully in the next several months, we'll start to get some things moving on that.
You understand my concept about the signs, it's great, but to me, it's like right before the crosswalk, that's not the issue, you got to do it further.
But too many signs becomes counterproductive.
I'm saying, you got to put a sign as you're making that turn, it's like, oh, kids, so you're aware of it before you get to the point where you have to slam your brakes on it.
A lot of the, a lot of the distances, the spacings are pretty specifically laid out by the manual and uniform traffic control devices. There's, there's standards that we generally follow with that, not to say you can't add some additional ones, and so that's certainly something we'll look into, but we typically fall back on, you know, so that all the communities in the whole country kind of have the same awareness when it comes, that's why they have, you know, these standardized spacings, exactly what signs you should use in each different type of intersection and type of crossing, but that's not to say we can't, we can't look at something additional.
Well, and especially the location up at North Campus there, you've got three crossings within two blocks, so.
So as far, Chief Kreese, is there a speeding issue on Hawthorne Parkway, or is that an issue, or just more of an attention span situation?
Yeah, I, I mean, obviously speeding can be a problem anywhere in town.
Of course.
I don't think there's a particular speeding issue on Hawthorne Parkway and, and I, I can't speak to the particular dynamics of these two crashes. But oftentimes, I know the one that trustee Schenk referred to was a very, actually a low speed, you know, incident, and we were, we were lucky. It doesn't take much speed to do a lot of damage to a pedestrian and cyclist, so, you know, I, I think what Chris has laid out, we're in a good position to make incremental, you know, a study and perhaps incremental improvements. This is never done, you know, when, it's wonderful to move around town and see all of the people cycling, adults and children alike, and that's, I'm sure, what you want to see in a community, so how to keep those crashes from happening is going to be a constant ongoing struggle, so.
Well, the speeding thing, I'm taking from if you're driving on the highway and you're in a construction zone, they like quadruple fine, something to that nature. Can we do that? You know, when you're driving in a construction zone?
Yeah.
It's a lot higher than if you're speeding without the construction zone. Is that right?
I don't know if you can do that.
I think there's a lot.
And for escalated fines for, for different violations and more serious speeding, the faster you're going, the more, the more expensive the fine gets.
I think this, if this is something that we can definitely sit around and, and the key players here, and come up with a multi-tiered approach to creating a safety plan, awareness plan, almost like a campaign to, as we roll into wanting our community connected by paths that we can walk and bike and tie it all in together, get the park district involved, I am sure all the players will come to the table and talk and just, it's, it's communication, it's awareness, and at the end of the day, you're going to have the ones that don't know what's going on, they're not from town, they don't care, they're doing their thing, and that becomes that defensive part that we have to make sure our pedestrians are aware of also, you know? You know, it's like, it boggles your mind when people just like, they walk and they have the right of way, but they don't look, and it's like, oh, gosh. Mostly in the city, like I'm going to say like in the city, and it's like, oof, okay, that's like a, you know, but it's, they know the right, you know, the rules, they have the right of way 100%, but it's the defensive, it's one of those things that we have to understand. But it's the drivers too, there's no doubt, you know, there's no doubt that the drivers are not paying attention, they're not expecting it, and it's, yeah, I think there's, we can, I think we can definitely, you know, get something in play here.
Education can start.
Right away.
Right away.
100%.
We're fortunate to have a lot of, a lot of communication platforms throughout the village that we can use. The engineering is going to take a little more time, we, like as Chris said, we need to make sure we're following the MUTCD, but yeah, the education, whether it's through Channel 4, YouTube, E-News, that can happen this summer even.
Yeah, schools, park, district, libraries, that's, you know, and if you would like to be part, I'm more than happy, you know, at all your openings and all the stuff that you guys do.
All right, any other citizens wishing to address the board? Okay, then under the village presence report is first, a thank you to the 2023 Vernon Hills Queens.
Hi, so I'm Haley and this is Karen, we're the co-directors for the Vernon Hills Pageant. We got involved back in 2012, which is now 14 years ago, when I first competed for the pageant, and then a few years ago, we took over as like a directing team, and we just wanted to thank the board and the village on behalf of the entire Vernon Hills Pageant system for being our main source of support. We really couldn't do anything that we do without you guys. Every year we put on a pageant and then our girls are around the town the whole year and they're doing community service and really just getting involved in any ways that they can, so we're really grateful for your support, both financially and like emotionally throughout their year of service.
She looks at me.
And so first, we want to start off with recognizing our 2023 Vernon Hills Queens. We have our Little Miss Savan and our Miss Annabella. Our junior miss Leah couldn't be here today, but we wanted to give a big shout out to the three of them, they had an amazing year this year, went to so many events, and Leah and Annabella both placed first runner up at the Lake County Illinois State Pageant, which we are so, so proud of, and just thank you to you three and your year, and we hope to see you back for sure in the future, even though Annabella's too old now, but. If you guys want to say anything, go for it, yeah.
I just want to thank you guys for your support throughout this whole year and planning all the events and everything for us as well. We've had a great year and we just want to thank you, so, yeah.
Did you say thank you? No, you're not, Chuck. The village has something for you. Mr. Cook does. You walk up to see Mr. Cook. We'll take, you can take Leah's.
Okay, Annabelle. That's for you, John, that's for you.
You can take, she can give it, yes, that's perfect. And also, she is the public speaker, I am not, Mr. Cook came to our pageant this year. We really, really appreciate that, so, any board member, you're welcome to come next June, come sit for the pageant, we'll have you up on stage, introduce you, Mayor Byrne. We would love for you to come out, I know a couple other villages, the mayor comes out and speaks on stage, so, I'm just saying.
It's, it's about the pageant, that's why I hung up.
Yeah, we didn't know Mr. Cook was coming until after the pageant, so.
That is true, you snuck in, so next year, if you come, we're bringing you up on stage.
Okay, and then.
And you guys did an excellent job with it, Haley, your job as emcee was amazing.
And then we also want to recognize our runners up and queens for the 2024 year. So starting off with our Little Misses, we have Little Miss contestant, or Little Miss Second Runner Up Rebecca Thomas Show who couldn't be here today, and then our Little Miss First Runner Up is Greta Conrad. And your new Little Miss Vernon Hills 2024 Evelyn Volley. And then for our junior misses, she wasn't able to make it, but Leah Torres was our first runner up, and Savannah Goodman is our Junior Miss Vernon Hills 2024. And our Miss Second Runner Up was Maya Wadwani. Our First Runner Up wasn't able to make it, but it was Tania Henry. And finally, our Miss Vernon Hills 2024 is Yael Pykus.
Evelyn, do you want to speak?
Hello, I'm Evelyn Volley, your Little Miss Vernon Hills 2024. It was so nice meeting you guys today and I'm really honored to be here. I'm a little taller, but, hi, I'm Savannah, and I'm just so honored to be here and I can't wait for the amazing year for all of us to have, thank you.
Hi, my name is Yael Pykus, and thank you for having us here, and thank you just for all of the work and effort you put into all of our events and as well as to the wonderful community that we have, and I can't wait for our year together, thank you.
Which, by the way, has already started, you guys have already been to the fishing derby and to the, and to the fireworks and the parade, yeah.
And so we had 15 contestants this year, which was amazing, we hope to have even more next year, but we're really excited for these three queens and their year ahead, and I hope you see a lot of them throughout the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come take a photo.
Yeah, if you want to, you can come up behind here and, come up behind us if you want to and take a picture of them. Sure, come on up. Yeah, come on up behind here and take a picture of them. Jeez. Now, usually at this point I say you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you probably want to stay for just the next item, because we're going to do an update on events and stuff, and then when we get to where we're starting to talk about the TIF surplus, I'll give you a chance to leave. Because some of us try to leave before we get to that person. So anyway, Assistant Village Manager on the events update, please.
Thank you, trustee Cook. Good evening, everyone. It is hard to believe, but we are nearly halfway through our summer programming. Here we are on July 9th with a recap of our first events, as well as an opportunity to promote our remaining community events in the village of Vernon Hills. As we just heard from Haley and Karen, we started off summer with our Vernon Hills Pageant on June 8th. Thank you to the queens who were at all of our 2023 events, and congratulations to the 2024 queens. As trustee Cook mentioned, you've already been at the fishing derby, we've seen you host and welcome everybody at the Arbor Theater concerts, and you were at the parade and fireworks, so thank you for that, we'll be sharing some pictures in a couple of minutes. Our next events that we're going to recap are the Arbor Theater concerts, and we've already had three concerts, and we've been fortunate to have amazing weather at each one, we've had a season of rain and thunderstorms. The Arbor Theater, it's been shining sun and shine, and a beautiful venue to enjoy the summer. The grounds have looked beautiful, so thank you to Public Works, and Chris, you've done an amazing job of keeping the mosquitoes at bay, so we appreciate that, and thank you to the Vernon Hills Police Department for conducting traffic control and ensuring the safety of everybody who visits that venue. Upcoming events include this Thursday with final say, so join us at the Arbor Theater for the next three concerts that, which are all on the screen. And as mentioned, our next event that we're going to recap is the Veterans Fishing Derby. On Sunday, June 23rd, the Vernon Hills Police Department hosted the Jim and Helen Hire Fishing Derby. So a little history on this event, as many know, Jim Hire was a World War II veteran, and was also a former village trustee, and he and his wife Helen left a legacy of service, which included providing veterans and service members receiving treatment at the VA, a day of recreation in beautiful Vernon Hills. A few pics of this event show our greeting party and our reception line, and then we had an opportunity where village staff prepared Vernon Hills swag bags, which were handed out to everybody, so the queens were there helping greet and hand out the bags, so thank you for that. And then this, this venue also includes an opportunity for a barbecue, so there's Commander Gillespie working the barbecue, and I see some of our servers, Melissa and Andy Hoppy, so thank you to all of our staff that were out there. We have some pics that we want to show of just the beautiful scenery and the veterans catching, and yes, there were, there were winners. Next slide will show, we have a picture of, we have largest fish, smallest fish, and then most fish by weight, and the picture that I want to draw everyone's attention to is on the far right, and that is Miss Vernon Hills holding a soldier's four pound bass by the gills, so if that doesn't make you a good lead candidate for Miss Lake County, I don't know what does, but, you know, a lot of soldiers wouldn't hold their own fish, but you held it by the gills, so congratulations. Of special note on this, on this event, it was 16 years ago this month that Jim and Helen shared with staff that due to health issues, they felt they were no longer capable of holding this event, and so the expression, if there's a will, there's a way, one of our village employees stepped up, her name is Andy Hoppy, she works at the Vernon Hills Police Department, and she volunteered to assume the role of coordinator, so this was her 15th year of running this event, so thank you to her, thank you to the PD, thank you to Public Works, the park district who makes that beautiful space available, and thank you to our veteran service organizations, there were at least three out there. Trustee Cook, you said you wanted to add a couple of comments on that?
Well, yeah, it's amazing, the groups all come together, the Legion Post and the VFW and, and the, and the people at Level Center, and our police department had, has really picked it up big time and helped to get from the park district, but especially Andy, because this is now 15 years she's been doing this, and that's incredible dedication, so we owe her, you know, a huge thank you for everything she's done for the last 15 years with that, so.
Absolutely. All right, next event.
It was a great day.
It was beautiful, yeah, it was absolutely a perfect day. All right, next slide, so we just came off of our July 4th programming, and as we experienced, we've experienced a lot of rain this season, but I'll tell you what, it was a great day, it was a little cloudy, but the thunderstorms stayed away, and it was just, just great to see so many people out there. Of special note, this was one of the highest levels of participation we've had at the parade, so we were very pleased by that. Some images that we'd like to share, there's our, our own board right there, so just a beautiful day on the float. And as, as traditionally done, we have, we provide a national anthem singer, so this year it was our summer, it was our intern that visited us here at the board, her name is Anaya Bendel, so she started off with the national anthem, and as traditionally done, the Legion then goes from there and kicks off the parade. There's some of our queens right there going down. And we had multiple bands this year, and if you recall, one of our residents asked if staff could talk to the bands and ask them to stop in front of the Charter Senior Facility, so some of the residents there could hear the music, and they did, so that was one of the demonstrations areas, areas this year, so they were all expressing their appreciation for that. And then some of the entertainment provided by the village, Jesse White Tumblers, James and the Giant Wheel and the. James and the Giant Wheel and the Cryer Wheel. And then, a lot of programming around the state, there's the Milwaukee Bagpipes and our Libertyville School of Rock. And then, some of our partners, D-73 Park District and the Cook Memorial Bookmobile. And then, special shout-out to Public Works for keeping the route absolutely phenomenal. Again, the police department for keeping everybody safe, they put a lot of work into that safety plan. Obviously, our partners at CFD, just tremendous effort by all of our partners. So, just a beautiful day. And want to give credit to our community volunteers. So, these events would not work without the volunteerism of the community. Our event coordinator is Kristin Devorek. This is her second full year of running the event, she did a great job. You'll see some of the staff and people we'd like to recognize. So, thank you to all of our volunteers.
And another group of people, there are a number of names on there, that people have been doing it for a lot of years.
Many years, that's correct. All right, thank you. And then, we had our evening programming at Century Park, just a beautiful night. The next slide just kind of captures what that venue looks like. Absolutely beautiful with the sun setting and the crowds starting to fill in. Just absolutely phenomenal, no rain. We had Jocelyn. There's our fireworks crew, Pyrotechnico, so they arrive with our fire marshal, Lieutenant Ron Seelak. Early in the morning, it takes them 10 hours to set up, so we had two truckloads of fireworks. For those that were out there, you probably saw one of the most amazing shows that we've had. Did a great job. Next slide will show our VIPs. You have Dr. O, trustee Takaoka, and trustee Cook, along with Jeff Ujiru, and we have Mark from the Park District Board all speaking. And then, after the national anthem, we had the countdown and just an amazing fireworks show. So, again, thank you to everybody who made that day special. And then, let's promote our upcoming events. So, we are, as Kevin mentioned, excited about what's to come. We have Vernon Hills Days, July 18th to the 21st at Century Park. And just a recap of the paid entertainment by the village, Thursday at 7:00 PM, we have Boy Band Night, followed by more fireworks. Friday, it's Alt 101 at 7:00 PM, and Everclear at 9:00 PM. And then Saturday night, we have the Ginger's Redheads Who Rock, followed by the former lead singer from Journey, Steve Augeri. So, that's going to be exciting. And then Sunday, we have Mike and Joe. So, it's going to be a great, great event, and we hope to see everybody out there. Beautiful venue. And then, we're going to give a plug to the police department for programming that's going to be on August 6th at Hartman Park, which is off of Oakwood Road. This is National Night Out, an annual community-building event that promotes police and community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie. VHPD is one of the few police departments that not only provides entertainment, but also a meal and ice cream to attendees. So, we look forward to hosting everybody, August 6th, which is a Tuesday, at Hartman Park. And then, as Jeff and his team are just in here promoting Rib Fest, we'll help push that as well. Friday, August 16th, Saturday, August 17th, at Century Park. This is the 13th year of this annual event, where all can enjoy blues, brews, and barbecue. The Vernon Hills Village Board does make a financial contribution to ensure only the best blues bands are booked for this event. So, again, thank you to all of our coordinators, volunteers, community partners, everybody who makes Vernon Hills summertime fun.
Okay. John, thank you so much for that update, and incredible thanks to all the people that work on all these events and that. Yeah, mayor?
Yeah. It's, it'll be a great event, Summer Celebration, Vernon Hills Days, Rock and Roll Forever.
Okay, anything from any other board members on any of this? Okay, then in that case, now we're about to start the TIF surplus, so if you want to.
No aspiring finance majors out there, no?
Wait, clear the house. Yeah. Tom, don't take it personally that when we get to you, it cleared the house.
I was trying to think of something to say the whole time.
Okay, so. Finance director.
All right, thank you. So, getting to the really exciting stuff tonight, including in the omnibus agenda are two resolutions, item M and N, that declare surplus in the Hawthorne Mall TIF. The IGA between the village and District 73 requires the village to declare the surplus each year. Now, as this, I just wanted to note this to the board, since we're getting up and running in this TIF over the last few years, the increment has started to be generated, which is now going to generate this surplus each year. The surplus is equal to the tax increment revenue generated by three specific parcels within the TIF district. And again, just for a reminder, the tax increment is basically the growth of the property tax since the inception of the TIF. So, as the values grow, this surplus will get bigger. And I just wanted to let the board know, this will be something we will bring forth once a year. That was it.
Any questions from the board, comments? Okay. Then, next item, chief, you wanted to address something?
I just thought it's an opportune time to brief the board. Hot off the presses, another really great community and police partnership came together this afternoon in the last couple hours to arrest two offenders. They're in custody now, two hours ago being processed. And I don't have all the particulars, but these offenders were pickpocketing our victims in the stores, it looks like Home Goods, Best Buy, TJ Maxx, Target. Were all involved, including at least one store in Gurnee, where a victim had a purse in the shopping cart. Offender is able to just wait for the right opportunity, snatch the wallet out of the purse, and then they immediately go and use the stolen credit cards for illegal purchases. Had done that actually at our Target, but because the victim notified us right away, and at least Target Loss Prevention Agent was right on top of it, was able to give our officers a very loose description of the likely offending vehicle. Literally, we got a color and a make of the vehicle. And with that, we had two detectives in a car on their smartphones, looking at the license plate readers, finding a vehicle that passed, coming out of the Best Buy parking lot on one of our license plate readers, realizing this is likely the suspect vehicle because of some registration information about that vehicle, responds right there, a sergeant in a patrol vehicle is right there, spot the offenders just as they're turning right onto 60 on the way out of town with a recently purchased, with our stolen proceeds, computer from Best Buy. Many thousands of dollars of gift cards that were purchased with our victims' credit cards. And we're able to take these two offenders into custody, they're being processed now. At least one of them, I'm told, has an out-of-state warrant out of Texas with nationwide extradition. Again, this is what these organized criminals do for a living. You and I all go wake up and go to work every day. This is their job, is to steal our stuff. And if we don't have victims quickly alerting us to the crime, and we don't have willing partners, like in this case in Target, cooperating and helping us, and if we don't have your support to provide this technology, we're very limited. And I can tell you, a couple years ago, this would have been a very hard case to interrupt, let alone to make an arrest in such a quick amount of time. So, as it just happened a couple hours ago, I thought I would share it with you. I'm very proud of the men and women, but most importantly, it's that trusting partnership they've developed with the community, because we can't do this alone, we don't want to do it alone. And again, I know sometimes in the news, people look at things like license plate readers and somehow think it could be an intrusion on their privacy, but we don't look up a vehicle if we don't have a reason to look it up. And in this case, this is the outcome, so.
Well, and to stress what you said earlier, if something happens, call.
Yeah.
Call immediately. You guys will never reject the call, take the call, and now we've got better methods of being able to follow up on that call as quickly as possible, but it has to be done fairly quickly.
And the last plug I'll give, and I don't have any Apple stock other than maybe divestment in a mutual fund, but a few years ago, they came out with their Apple AirTags. You can buy four of them for less than $100. Every lady in my life has one of these in their wallet. They're about the size of a quarter, maybe a fat quarter. You put in your wallet, and that way whichever purse you're putting your wallet in, you can track where that goes. And even though we were able to recover these credit cards, we're still looking for the wallet. And I know that's a real pain in the butt, so. A good way to help make sure that you get your property back if you are victimized. I'm a huge fan of those things, you can put them in your golf clubs, you can put one in the trunk of your vehicle. So, if your car gets stolen, it's a simple way to track your vehicle, so.
I believe too that someone from Public Works put it in a flower pot that's along Butterfield and found where it was in somebody's yard in North Chicago.
That's exactly right. We recently made, solved the case of the disappearing new landscaping. Chris?
This was a yearly issue, people were stealing our plantings on Butterfield Road. So, one of our staff put those AirTags inside, down inside like the fabric of a plant, and we helped with the police department. We were able to just try to get the person to stop taking our plants.
So.
With that, I know we recovered the property, I know there's an investigation. I'm not certain. And that's often the case, right? But, and this is why I'm such a big fan of these devices, because for $25 and you don't have any subscription cost, you're going to get your stuff back. Whether or not we make an arrest as a result is probably not as important as getting your stuff back when you.
Well, let's send a message out, don't mess with any of our stuff, because it might have a tag in it.
It might have a tag in it, that's right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, chief. Good work. Nobody else has a speaking part tonight? Okay, then next item is the omnibus vote agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through N?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions on any of the items? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Markhart.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tim Cook.
Aye, motion carries. No unfinished business. New business, approval and passage of ordinance 2024-091, an ordinance amending Chapter 5 Buildings and Building Regulations of the Vernon Hills Code, Article 11, fees, bonds, and insurance requirements.
Thank you. So, the amendment that staff is proposing here to the building code relates to the, how we handle unclaimed completion bonds on construction permits in order to move them from basically a holding account back to the general fund. The code currently states that we have to publish the full list of the unclaimed bonds twice a year, and any given bond has to be on the list twice before that amount can be moved into the general fund. The list of unclaimed bonds is long enough that actually publishing the entire list with the building permit applicant's name, the permit number, the dollar amount, the address, it ends up being a seven-page ad that no one's looking at. So, what we'd like to do instead is keep that list on the village website, make it fairly easy to find it. And then, twice a year, we would publish a notice in the newspaper directing the public, alerting everyone that this list exists. And the amendment would just allow us that flexibility to sort of modernize how we alert the public to this list. So, there are other types of bonds that we handle differently, but this is specific to a type of bond that's capped at $5,000 regardless of the size of the project. The most expensive one would be construction of a new house, probably. So, for the most part, these bonds are unclaimed because the individuals don't call for a final inspection. So, as a matter of procedure, that bond could be used for damage to the right of way or other things. But generally speaking, the reason they're sitting there in this liability account is that the individual never finalized the permit out. So, as a procedural matter, we just would like to have this amended so that we can make it easier for people to find the list and easier for us to process the unclaimed bonds.
Well, along that line, one of the things I was thinking about was, do we ever follow up?
Do we call them?
Yeah, because I would believe that final inspection is kind of important. It's the whole point of getting a permit and that. I mean, can we follow up and say, you know, we never got a chance to final inspect it?
We certainly could try to figure out some way. With email, for example, now, it should be a little bit easier to do a mass email. I can certainly look into it to see if there's another way to just let people know that we are holding on to their bond because they failed to finalize their project.
So, how many per year, would you guess? You said it's seven pages, but.
Yeah, it was a pretty large number, I could find for you, but it was.
We talking 30, we talking 150?
It was more in the hundreds.
In the hundreds? And these are only a year or two years old, or?
They're primarily a year old. Our system for closing out permits administratively, we pull the ones every year at the end of the year. So, usually in January, we pull everything from the prior year. So, they're probably a good 100-plus per year.
And the village is keeping the money, then, because we're not.
Yeah, the code does allow us to move it to the general fund if it's unclaimed on completion of the publication.
And what happens if someone doesn't have a final inspection in terms of, in terms of fulfilling the requirements, et cetera?
So, at the moment, we don't necessarily chase people down, the hundreds plus that are failing to call in for their final inspection. Primarily, it's things like siding, roof siding, et cetera. So, you know, if they fail to call it in, we don't know that it ever even happened necessarily. So, it is a, something that we can certainly try to figure out other ways to communicate with people.
Yeah, I think there'd be an automated system, that would be.
Yeah, and I think some of it is just a matter of the contractor and the homeowner not coordinating on it either, so.
Interesting, okay.
I got a question on that.
Yeah, mayor?
Yeah. What about, you know, hot water tanks? That really got invented properly? I mean, how often do we inspect those that a person has?
We do a final. We do do a final on those, and I don't know a statistic on what the spread is of the type of permit, but you're correct, that is one of the main reasons we do want people to finalize their water heaters, to make sure that it's properly invented. But I can certainly look into it and get some stats on the types of permits we're talking about.
So, those we do on a regular basis?
I'm sorry, I missed the question there.
I said, the hot water tanks, we inspect on a regular basis?
Yeah, on whenever they're replaced, yes, we do an inspection, primarily to ensure that they're vetted properly.
Right.
Any other comments? Trustee Schenk?
So, like, I was, so if somebody, a homeowner does a hot water tank or a basement or a remodel somewhere in the house, you know, they're moving pipes around, and they don't come in to file their, they don't call for their final, when do we go and check in on them?
The, I.
What's that? What's that?
I don't believe we're tracking them down to remind them. This unclaimed bond list is our mechanism for alerting people that they have this unclaimed bond, and the way to resolve it would be to call in for the final. But it's a good point. We do have, we have 1,500-plus inspections a year, and we're talking about maybe 1,500-plus permits a year, and about 100 out of that 1,500 are failing to do this. So we can certainly.
So are they okay with, I mean, maybe they're okay with, they look at it as like, well, I don't think I'm going to pass the inspection, so I'll just forfeit my bond.
Could be.
And then so when it's like, as Roger, excuse me, Mayor Byrne said, that the, you know, like somebody replaces a hot water tank and it's not vented properly, and if they don't call for the final, that's a risk for themselves and the homeowners around them. We don't check in on them?
Sure. What I can do is, very good question. What I'll do is I'll go through the current list of unclaimed bonds and try to get some detail as to the types of permits that are most commonly not filed out.
I don't think as much as the venting, as it is the connections.
Other comments or questions from the board?
Nope.
Okay, then is there a motion to approve Ordinance 2024-091?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Trusty Forster.
Aye.
Trusty Takaoka.
Aye.
Trusty Schenk.
Aye.
Trusty Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trusty Markwart.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tim Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. Second item is approval and passage of Ordinance 2024-095, an ordinance awarding the Vernon Hills Athletic Complex parking expansion project to Chicagoland Paving Contractors for $630,000. Director Vanetta?
Yeah, so we've brought this project to the board a couple times now. And so now we are at the construction phase. And so I just wanted to do a brief update on where we are and some options we have for moving forward. As you remember, we awarded this contract to the Design to Thomas Engineering Group. I came back a couple months ago to discuss kind of a design direction, because we were faced with stormwater constraints on the project. At that time, the board made the direction, the decision to try to maximize the parking we could install without having to take on some major stormwater modifications in the facility. So that's the direction we went in. We ran into a couple conflicts throughout design, most notably some soil condition issues as well as utility issues. The utility issues were fairly significant with comm ed, that we couldn't build one continuous parking lot. So that's why the design you see in front of you was kind of two extensions, an extension off the lot to the north, and then an extension from the lot to the west, gapping these major utility issues that were going to be a six-figure price tag to relocate some of these comm ed lines. So with all that being said, we put the contract out to bid. The, we received three bids for this. They came in, I'd say, significantly above our budgeted amount for the project. So I put a chart in the memo. We originally budgeted $350,000. We were expecting our engineer estimate, once we got this final design, was a little over $500,000. And the low bid came in at $630,000. The next two bids were significantly higher than that, in the $850,000 range, give or take. So I laid out three basic options to the board. One is to approve this ordinance, as it's written today, and award the contract to Chicagoland Paving. This is the option that would let us build this parking lot this year, have it open in time for really the busy, the peak busy season we get in the spring, is when we get several baseball tournaments, as well as the soccer and lacrosse going on. And a lot of our user groups, we get that high demand in the parking lot, which is one of the main reasons we are looking to build this project in the first place. So with that option, it would be $280,000 over our budgeted amount. There's a couple ways to come up with that additional funding. One is through a budget amendment, or using any projects that are either deferred or delayed in the capital program. I guess just for your reference on Omnibus tonight, two of the projects, the Centennial Crossing Pond Retaining Wall and the Port Clinton Bridge, those two projects alone came in $200,000 under budget. So we're expecting, historically, it's very common for this amount of money to come in under the overall capital fund. Option number two would be, we could redesign this project. We would have to throw out the current bids. It wouldn't take much to redesign. It would be eliminating that western parking expansion with the goal to reduce the cost, to come in closer to one of these numbers that we hoped it would be. The risk with that is, as you see with the three bids, one was significantly lower than the other three. So, you know, if that bidder falls out, or, you know, the climate is just not good, I think this is a fairly, it's a straightforward yet somewhat complex project, because there's, it's not large, but it has every moving part that a major project would have with earthwork and stone and asphalt and concrete and lighting and many different projects. We're not getting the economies of scale that you get with a really, a larger project. But that would be option two. And then option three would, is of course, we could do nothing. We don't have to move forward with any project. We could evaluate the total needs of the facility in kind of way where best to allocate our funding. So the options are forth in front of you tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, you said those other two projects came in 200,000 under budget, right?
Correct.
So that only leaves an $80,000 gap.
And I would, historically, yes, there are going to be other projects on our capital program that'll probably come under, some that we may not finish this year. So I think the question is, it's not as much, is there the funds in the capital program, as it is, do we want to spend this amount of money on a parking facility at the V-hack?
So I have a question. So, maybe I wasn't listening. So it came in 280,000 over budget because the comm ed lines you had to redo?
So when we initially scoped out this project, we made a best guess on what, for our budgeting back last year, for what it would be to construct a parking lot in a green field like this. Through the design, the soils issues, we got a geotechnical analysis during design and showed fairly poor soils. So we have, in this bid includes like, it's called a GeoMat. It's to stabilize the soils. We're also have, within the budget, expecting a certain percentage of additional soil removals, undercuts throughout the parking lot. There's always a chance, this is a unit price contract, so there's a chance they open up the area, the soils are better than we expected, you know, they only take a couple borings throughout, and it might come in under that price. But this is the worst-case scenario to allow us flexibility to build a stable parking lot. That was one of the main issues, the cost increase. The other one was.
Well, and our own engineer's estimate was 540, so it was.
Right. So through design, we started seeing that our budget was low. And then the comm ed issue caused us to have to break the parking lot into two separate parts in order, with ultimately the goal, and the reason we did that is we said, hey, let's still maximize the stall count, given our available stormwater capacity, so we could see what is the most we can put here. And so rather than just value engineering that portion out and saying, hey, well, it's just, I didn't want to unilaterally make the decision to scrap 30% of the parking stalls, until we got prices and see what this actually came in as. So those were the two main factors that led to that increased cost from what was originally budgeted.
Okay.
Are you surprised?
That just, to me, seems kind of high, but I don't know.
Are you surprised that the engineer's estimate was so far below?
The actual.
Even, yeah, the actual, even the lowest cost.
Yeah, it was $90,000.
I do believe these bids came in higher than I expected. I would say, I thought the engineer's estimate was at the high end. You know, we thought we had good numbers together with what they tied together. So it could be the time of the year, the season, you really never know. It's a, might just be a more complex project that the bidders didn't want, and everyone was booked up for the year. It's hard to speculate, but the bids did come in higher than I expected.
Well, and the other two bidders were another 240,000 or 250,000 over the.
It's because they're busy. I can guarantee you, I've seen, yeah, I've seen projects, it's because they're busy, they'll just overbid, just knowing that they're not going to get it. If they can get away with it, of course, they'll do it. Is it asphalt? Is that another thing? What's the cost of asphalt? Does that fluctuate really much?
Oil. That's, it does affect the oil.
It's more, the issue we get, like the cost of asphalt, what they're charging us on this project, I would say is significantly different than our road rehabilitation project, because we're doing a lot more of it. This is pretty much every trade coming in for a small section of work. So that's where you see, like I said, you don't get the economies of scale. The prices are higher than you expect, because it's, still has all the elements of a major project, but in a small footprint.
Well, I think with those other two projects being so far under bid, and being, the gap only being 80,000 right now, I think we should go.
You can do it that way if you isolate it, because like you said, there's other projects that'll come under, some may go over. You got to look at it from a macro perspective. I mean, I guess.
And there'll be other projects that we're not aware of that we're going to have to fund too.
Well, that's, yeah, I mean, that's easy to do, but I don't know about the other stuff.
Well, what's the.
Do we have any other similar projects that we can lump together and get economy of scale?
Not that are similar, not that are ready to go at this time for this.
Can, how often, outside of like Pipe City and the big tournaments and the baseball tournaments, how often are the lots filled? I mean, I live right there, so it's kind of, I can always, you always find a spot, right? So the question is like, how often are the lots filled, where we need these about 100 spots or so, right? And is it worth, I mean, like $63,000 a spot, basically, right? That's what we're looking at.
Right. I think you make an excellent point. The, we get several peak weekends where we get a lot of feedback from our user groups that they feel there's not enough parking in the facility. I would say generally what we see is that there is parking, it's just significantly farther away. This is essentially building the best parking, you know, prime parking. This is the closest to the fields, closest to the turf fields. Some of the, this is really putting, when you have equipment, from what we hear, you know, the coaches come, there's lots to load in and out. They don't want to park all the way up in the school's parking lot and carry things down. So I think that's where we're getting this feedback of this need for additional parking.
Is 100 going to alleviate that? Or is it going to be, out of 300 complaining, there's only going to be 200 complaining? I mean, I just don't know. What I do know is that baseball, softball, and soccer, they butt heads pretty hard about who's parking where, because it's like, I know baseball's upset with the soccer clubs and stuff, and vice versa, and, you know, everybody thinks they got the first right, you know, first right refusal of the parking spots. So I don't know if we can do anything about that from a community service perspective.
Yeah, I don't think there's a magic number that we were going for. I think any bit, especially in this area, will help significantly on those peak weekends. But standard Wednesday, Thursday, it's not like this is an absolute must for the facility during those times. It's the peak times, the weekends.
When's the rest of the, when we did the road, did we do the parking lots too? The current parking lots? Are those up for repaving at some point?
We did the parking lot on the north side. I believe, yes, we did, we did the parking lots with last year.
Okay, so that's all done.
Yes.
Tom, can we absorb this, given future state of sales tax revenue coming in?
I mean, to your point.
Over the next five years?
The sales tax is slowing down, as we've been anticipating. But there is, as Chris mentioned earlier, in the capital program, there's a lot of things that come under, a lot of things that get deferred, just from timing of those projects, in which we then rebudget in future years. So from my experience over the past several years, there's usually plenty of room within the program to absorb overages like this. And if we come to a point where we're further on in the year, where we're looking at the budget, and we're maybe to budget, or maybe even looking like we might go over the capital program, we can then present a budget amendment in which we can provide additional funding from the general fund, which we can absorb, if we need to go that far.
Thank you.
Do we provide?
I got a question.
Yes, go ahead, Mayor.
Yeah. In our contract, with, in this case, Chicagoland, what happens if there really is a significant jump in the price of oil? How is that addressed in our contract?
The way our contract's set up is based on the IDOT specifications. They have some guidelines for significant material changes. I don't have the exact way it works off the top of my head, but within their spec book, there are some allowances for a significant fluctuation in the cost of raw materials. You usually don't see that in one season. The risk would be, if you, you know, you would award a project and would need to get delayed to next year, that's usually the case where you see adjustments due to material costs. So we don't expect anything to get affected if this were to be awarded and start moving forward with it this season.
Yeah, because I could tell you a story that occurred in our town about 15 years ago, and it was with a-lamp construction, and it was about a $200,000 extra cost that they were putting, you know, putting on us because of our contract language. So I don't know, is corporation counsel here?
Yes.
Yep.
I can't see him on my screen. But I mean, could we take a look at that to make sure we're not in the same situation? Because this is a pretty good site, right?
Yeah, we'll be happy to take a look at the contract and the specs and provide information to Chris.
Yeah, would you do that, please?
Yes, sir.
Do we provide any kind of tram service between the high school parking lot and where the soccer?
I don't believe so. As far as I know, not for any of our standard, busier weekends.
I wonder how much that would cost. You know, maybe instead of, instead of building 100 parking spots, just provide tram service for the, for the people who need to park further away, then they wouldn't be complaining.
Do you say tram service?
Yeah, you know, just like a shuttle, like, you know, bigger golf carts that can.
Like the police golf cart.
They have shuttles, that's cheaper.
That's what I mean.
That's the problem.
Is, I mean, is that really a big issue, the liability?
Insurance every year.
Roger, what would be the cost of insurance?
How long would it take to get the 630,000 in insurance? Is this an absolute necessity? I mean, are you hearing from the athletic clubs? I mean, who's complaining?
We're hearing from several of our user groups. Specifically, we get it on the baseball tournaments and the weekends coming in the early spring, when we have, because that's when you have a lot of the baseball users. It's our local baseball teams using them. And then we still have a lot of the other fields that we get from the soccer and lacrosse groups as well, that starts to, like Trusty Schenk touched on, we start to get a lot of competing interests here in the parking lot.
Are they not coming if we don't have these 100 spots?
They go.
They're still coming.
Trusty Markwart?
Yeah, one of the things I, I think a lot of people, I've brought this up a few times, understand something. The V-hack is operated and owned technically by the village. We put $260,000 in it per year for maintaining it. And it is from the village for our residents. So the residents don't pay for this. The tournaments, we get money from tournaments, but from the clubs of baseball, or any other sports, soccer, the money doesn't come into the village on these. They use the fields, and the village pays for those, for those fields, pays for the maintenance. So understand that. We put this parking lot in, it's out of the village's pocket, not out of anybody else, no taxpayer, nothing. So we do this because it's, one, it's one hell of a spot. And we do it as courtesy for our, for our residents. and, uh, we do it as courtesy for our, for our residents. So, I'd like to make that clear, because a lot of people don't understand or make comments that my tax pa, uh, my tax dollars go for this. No, it doesn't, it comes out of the village's, uh, pocket and we get it from sales tax dollars. Enough of my.
Understand.
So what's the force preference, option one, option two, option three?
I mean, it, it would be nice to have parking spots there, those are truly prime, it's a prime area.
Okay, well then.
Option one is like as, as presented, right?
Let's start with, is there a motion to approve? We can go with that, start, is there a motion to approve?
We still have a discussion if there's a motion.
Well, I mean, and is there a motion to approve, uh, ordinance twenty, twenty-four dash zero-nine-five?
When, when we talked about it last time, when we were looking at the different options, where, I, I can't remember the dollar number you were showing us, was that, was that under the assumption still of the three-fifty or was that under the five-forty?
That, that was still the three-fifty, we were still looking at close to the budget numbers, that was before our geotechnical engineering was complete. We were just doing conceptual studies based on the stormwater impacts, and so that's what we, we were still hoping it would be a, uh, closer to our budgeted amount at that time.
Yeah, because we, we'd already agreed to take out that middle area, we weren't gonna do the whole thing because of the stormwaters, I understand.
Correct.
Anyway, but that was still under the three-fifty estimate, not the six-thirty estimate, which is almost not quite doubled.
Look, conceptually, I'm all for it, a hundred percent, it just, I was just a little, you know, concerned about the little budget off, being off.
Well, that's why, yeah, I agree with that too.
Uh, you know, amenities for the residents, right? Well, the putting green is an amenity because we don't charge these that, that's three-fifty, it's gonna, okay, good, I'm glad you like it. And, um, you know, to Mike's point, I mean, we pay for this, but we get revenue from field usage fees. So if we're improving the facility, there's nothing wrong with adjusting the cost to use the facilities because if I'm correct, we're still the best buck, best, best bet in town within twenty-five miles, right? Of our field usage fees. So, making adjustments to those fees will most likely be expected from clubs all over.
Don't we already have some long-term contracts for those, like Pipe City and?
Yeah, but I think there's some, you know, there's, at some point, those contracts come due, so.
Well, but for right now, we've got three choices, we can either approve this, or we can not approve this and have, look for a scale back, in which case we also run the risk of those higher bids.
Right, we might get less for the same amount.
Yeah, you know, or, or just, you know, put it off.
Or not do anything.
Motion, motion to approve, option one.
Yeah.
Option one.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash zero-nine-five, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
No, I mean, we bring in, like, like, we, we have in-house finance now, we have, you know, these guys, we bring them in, we have to kind of, if they're saying that we can do, do it, you know, you know, I'm with them.
There's lots of things we could do, we've got a big piggy bank, but it's a question of whether or not it's worth it.
Sure.
That's the thing.
Another way I'll sort of look at this, as Trustee Shank had mentioned, when we have the tournaments that benefits our businesses that are in this town.
Sure.
And, uh, and that's what produces the sales tax dollars which benefits this village.
Absolutely.
So, uh, I, I, I can bite on some of this, uh, when I talk about the V-HAC, but I would tell you, uh, yes, I would definitely support option one.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve this for the amount of six-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars?
Yeah.
All right, um, any other comments, questions?
I mean, I, I want to go back to my idea and question, like, how often do we have larger events that these parking lots really fill? How many, how many days out of the year are we talking about? Because it, it really would be worth it, just to even hire shuttles or something, and they could even shuttle people right up to the field or close to it, and then people would be even happier if you hop right on, just kind of like you, as you do at Disney World or something, and.
I mean, the, the, the peak usage of the facility is throughout the summer months, obviously, from, from, uh, you know, May to, to September. You know, I would say a third or half of those weekends, we, we see significant usage within these parking lots, um, as.
So it's not just a few, it's not just the big tournament days, it's other times.
Those, those are the ones that we get the loudest feedback from, um, but again, these, the, to, to go back to the, the stalls here, these are gonna be the, the ones that are probably gonna be filling up first, these are the most premium stalls in the facility. It makes the most sense in this location, it's land that's not gonna be used for other things. So, as far as the parking goes, I, I can't speak to some of the details on your other idea though at this time.
Long-term, it sounds like it's a very good investment regardless of the cost, so, yeah.
Yeah, let's say an idea, let's do a V-H mobile app, like they have Park Mobile down in the city, I got the app, just put your zone number in and bam, you pay for it an hour. What do you think of that?
Oh, to pay for the pre, the primo spots, you mean?
Call it V-H, V-H Park, Park It.
That's a little bit regressive.
In these things. That's just an idea.
Okay.
Do it all the time in the city when I'm visiting somewhere.
Kind of like, kind of like charging for the, the train station, charge for these particular primo spots, that, yeah, that.
Five, five bucks an hour.
Yeah, that's.
I don't agree on that.
Yeah, that's, that's a bit, a bit of a regressive tax.
Hey, just an idea.
All right, so.
The haves and the have-nots.
Can I add something? Yeah, let's, let's, that's.
Hey.
Yes, sir.
Can I add something?
Yes.
How much do these tournaments collect as parking fees?
How much is what?
They charge people to park in our lot.
Do they?
Yes, they do.
We'll find out in about four days.
Yeah, Pipe City does.
Pipe City's coming this weekend.
We don't, we don't have access.
We can take a portion of that.
We, we don't have access to their, um, revenue data, uh, but to a, a question that Dr. Oppenheim raised earlier, we currently have three agreements that are in need of renewal, two for the tour, the tournaments, Pipe City and Chicago Cup over Labor Day weekend, and then our, our V-HAC turf agreement. So, those are all three on the table right now, um, which are all three heavy users of parking through periods of the year. So, just wanted to note that for the group.
Well, yeah, let's go after a portion of, if, if they're gonna, if they're gonna charge people to park in the lot we're paying for, we should get a percentage of it.
Yeah. They've been doing that for years.
Yeah.
I think it's something like ten dollars a day, each car.
There's, there's gonna.
We'll take fifty percent.
They'll just pass it on, whatever.
They're just gonna up their charge, if they're gonna give us five.
Well, the thing is, is that's just money going in their pocket for nothing, they didn't provide anything. So we should either get it the whole amount or, or at least fifty percent of it.
Yeah.
So that's something to look into in the future, so are we ready to vote on this one?
Yeah, that's ready.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right, then roll call, please.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Shank.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoaka.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye, motion carries, but that's a great idea to go forward in the future, looking at, hey, we want the parking money, or at least part of it.
Help pay for these new primo spots.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that's all for tonight, anybody have any communication they want to?
I have one question.
Yeah.
Um, am I right that the ordinance for holiday decorations to come down is thirty days after a holiday? Do you have decorations up? I'm like.
I believe that's correct.
Okay, it's July, and I gotta say, when I'm walking, one out of every fifteen homes has holiday lights still hanging in their gutters. It drives me mad, so is there a, um, just down the road, can we have like a communication plan or something about communicating that it's not Christmas in July in Vernon Hills?
Yeah, we can, we can certainly do that.
It goes through deer paths, we've been trying to get people to put their garbage cans away.
It's, it's maddening to me that it's, it's, no, but they dangle and it's, you know what I mean, it's the danglers, it's just, it's not attractive, um, so I, just thinking down the road, can we, around the holidays, somehow blasted in our emails something about, don't forget to do that?
Yeah, we'll, we'll make a note that in January and December, to do a notice to the community, and then in the meantime, we can always do a courtesy notice to some of those residents, reminding them of our, of ordinance and.
And I don't know if we, i- in that communication can say that there's a fine down the road or something, but, something, but.
Sure.
It's six months out.
Agreed.
Well, that's like compliance versus enforcement, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Other communications?
No, I'm, I'm envisioning.
Other comments or communications? Okay, then is there a motion to adjourn the board meeting and go to committee of the whole?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, uh, motion of second to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, we're adjourned.
Okay, uh, like a motion to appoint Trustee Cook, uh, President Pro Tem for the committee of the whole meeting.
I'd like to nominate Trustee Cook to be President Pro Tem for the duration of the meeting, second.
Roll call.
Trustee Shank.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoaka.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye, motion carries.
Okay, first item of business is approval of the committee of the whole many, meeting minutes of June eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion of second, any comments, questions, corrections? Hearing then roll call, please.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Shank.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoaka.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye, motion carries. Only item on the agenda tonight is the discussion of the LakeCom transition loan, who's taking, manager?
Thank you, Trustee Cook. Um, so, our, a few board meetings this year, we've, we've provided the board with an update on our, our process and our nine-one-one consolidation. Um, at our last board meeting, we took some major steps in that direction by approving two key IGAs. Uh, the first was establishing LakeCom as a new entity and, um, ironing Vernon Hills as one of the founding members of that agency. And then the second was establishing the new, uh, joint ETSB of Lake County, uh, which would be collecting the nine-one-one surcharge revenues for all the member communities and be, uh, serving as a funding mechanism, uh, for, for LakeCom. There was a deadline last week, uh, for agencies in Lake County to join LakeCom and become founding members, and as of yesterday, so far, twenty-two member jurisdictions have signed on to join, and we are slotted to have our first, uh, member board meeting for LakeCom next Tuesday. This is just a, a quick snapshot so far of the status of the different agencies in Lake County and, and where they are in their decision process. So overall, we have twenty-two, um, jurisdictions that represents twenty-six individual public safety departments in Lake County, and that also includes Lake County government as well.
So the green dots represent those that have joined?
That's correct. So the green dots are those that have joined, yellow are those that are pending, the black represent those that have not committed yet or signaled what their commitment is, and then the red are those that have indicated that they're not willing to join at this time.
And the ones in black were part of these meetings all along, or were they kind of out in the wings and?
Yeah, our, our process over the last few years has been open, uh, open meetings, uh, transparent. Uh, we've done our best to keep all of the agencies in Lake County abreast of, of the progress that we've made. So, I'm, I'm confident all of the agencies that are on the list have, have been kept in the loop on, on, on our status.
Sure, yeah, no, I was just wondering whether, were they active participants all along? And then they, and then they kind of changed their mind at the last end?
So some, some weren't, um, some of these agencies that are in black, um, were part of a, a larger PSAP, and so as we've gone through this process, we've relied on the PSAPs to work with their current customers on, on providing them information. So, there, there might not have been, um, direct representation from these entities at our meetings, but the intent was that their, you know, mother PSAP would be communicating to them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So as, as we kind of touched on at our last board meeting, um, we've gotten through the, the first big milestone, which is the approval of those important IGAs, and over the next year, we have a lot of work ahead of us with regards to transitioning, uh, this, what's now on paper entity into an actual live organization. And so, this is just a snapshot, um, very high level of some of the action items that are gonna have to happen over the course of the next year. This includes things like, um, searching for and hiring an executive director for the agency, um, hiring support staff, training individuals, um, purchasing software and equipment, um, so on and so forth, with the ultimate goal of going live with the entity sometime, hopefully July of twenty-twenty-five. Um, that is the anticipated date that the new facility in Libertyville, The Rock as they call it, um, is expected to be, um, open and available. And so because of, of all the work that's ahead in the next twelve to eighteen months, um, there's going to be a lot of expense incurred as a result of that, um, because LakeCom right now is only an entity on paper, doesn't have any starting capital or assets, um, will not be collecting any revenue from its member agencies until it begins delivering service in twenty-twenty-five, and because of those first two factors, really can't pursue any traditional lending methods, um, there's been discussions, as we've mentioned previously, about, um, reaching out to various member agencies for a transition loan. And so that's what I wanted to review with the board this evening. Fortunately, uh, Vernon Hills is one of the entities that is in a financial position to be eligible for entertaining a loan to LakeCom. The Village of Gurnee has also expressed a desire to support, along with, uh, Lake County. There are potentially one or two other municipalities in Lake County that are considering this as well, and, uh, if they eventually agree to do that, they would eventually be added to an intergovernmental agreement that, that governs how these loans would be administered. So what I wanted to review this evening were the proposed terms and conditions, uh, that the transition team has worked on. What we're looking at here is a total loan amount among the aggregate group of about six million dollars. This would be governed by an intergovernmental agreement that includes all of the lending agencies and LakeCom. And the idea is that the loan draw requests would come in the amounts of one-million-dollar increments, and the deadline for those would be through the first two years of transition, so we're currently in fiscal year twenty-five. The LakeCom fiscal year matches the Village of Vernon Hills fiscal year, uh, through fiscal year twenty-six, which end on April thirtieth. So you can see kind of a loan sequencing here, again, this is up to a million dollars per draw request, starting with Vernon Hills, Gurnee, any additional parties that they do sign on, and then completing that sequence with Lake County at the bottom, who's, um, acting as the fiduciary for LakeCom until they can establish their own, uh, finance arm, and then also, Lake County agreeing to provide a line of credit for cash, short-term cash flow needs for the agency. The, the proposed duration of the loan is a ten-year term, again, there would be no payments for the first two years of transition for the entity, so those would begin in fiscal year twenty-twenty-seven with eight annual payments from there through fiscal year thirty-four. Below here is a sample of what that schedule would look like for each one-million-dollar, uh, draw. So again, this is a, this is a new entity, um, it's taken a lot of work to get to where we are today. Um, there have certainly been challenges with regards to sharing costs for this agency, and being sensitive to that, uh, the current proposal right now is to provide interest-free loans to this entity. Um, the thought of the transition team was that this would put LakeCom in the best position going forward to keep the cost down for the member agencies, which obviously includes the Village of Vernon Hills. Um, but just for, for, for prudency here, we wanted to show the board an example of what the opportunity cost of a zero-interest loan would look like for the village. Um, Director Lyons put together a, a quick pro forma using a, a ten-year treasury market rate from, I believe, Monday at four-point-two-eight percent, so over a ten-year period for a million-dollar loan, there's a, about a two-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-dollar opportunity cost on that money. For, for the Village of Vernon Hills, correct.
So how many other, uh, municipalities are really gonna be able to put up money, other than Gurnee, in your mind?
There's potentially one or two others that are considering it, um, but your, your point's correct, we're, we're fortunate to be in our financial position where we have the available cash to be able to do this.
Now, can you remind me again, who's running, is there gonna be like a CEO or a COO of this LakeCom who's gonna like be overseeing it?
Executive director.
Who's gonna be the executive director?
I don't know.
Well.
It was on the, it was on the flow sheet, they haven't hired yet.
Okay, well, I didn't see it, but.
This is one of the things that this funding allows, is to hire an executive director who would report to the executive committee.
Right.
Which is elected by the member board, so they will oversee the hiring of the executive director, approve the budget, and other key hires of the senior management of this organization. Right now, LakeCom doesn't have a single employee.
Are you going outside, or could it be someone within Vernon Hills hypothetically? Or are you, are you going outside searching for this?
This will be a national search.
This will be a. This is a specialty, a very specialized.
I figured.
Leadership position that is needed to run LakeCom.
Okay.
So the opportunity on a million dollars, if we didn't give it as a loan, no, 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 no. If we didn't give a loan, it's probably about 4.28%, about a half a million dollars in 10 years, right? If we just sat on the money.
We said it's 35.
No, that's if, that's if we took interest on the loan. If we didn't give the loan, we just held on to the million dollars and he's investing in 4 or 5%.
Yeah, I should clarify that, so the Vernon Hills maximum loan amount would be $2 million. That's the max.
That's not what I was. So, 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 so in that case, you know, you're also sitting on a, a potential loss of interest revenue for the village if we invested that, and if we didn't do the loan, it'd be a million dollars on 2 million.
Yeah, this opportunity cost here is based on investing into a treasury yield.
This, well, this, this, the opportunity, I think, what I thought I was looking at is if we charge interest for the loan, correct?
No.
No, this is if we were to take that million dollars and actually put it into a treasury instead.
So you're taking account the, the principal payments back then?
That's correct.
Why it's, why, because, because it's getting paid back. But if, if we didn't give the loan and you sit on the million dollars, what would you be at in 10 years?
It would be more than the 2.
It'd be more than, it'd be 520. Maybe, maybe.
Yeah, I didn't calculate it out, but 2 million, I mean, we're talking for 2 million dollars.
Million, for a million, because you're, you're compounding annually based on, right? You know, it's like a million four, million oh four, million oh eight, million, you know, it, well, it's compounding, right?
I mean, the point we wanted to share here was, was just that, that there is a significant opportunity cost of it.
When we get to the second loan, right, is there opportunity to charge interest on that loan if we're in a bind? You know, I'm just saying.
Well, we don't lose our total opportunity of loan because as the payments start to come in, we pump that back in.
So here's the real question.
So it will make some money.
So that it would be fourth year when we put the second loan, but we don't start receiving payments to the third year on each one. So we're going to get a little bit.
Right.
I just, it just, just trying to make sure that.
It's not fourth year, isn't it just in the next two years? Third year, you start to get principal.
Looking at the. LakeCom would have until April of 2026 to request.
Draw money.
Draw, a draw. And no payment would begin before April 30, 2026. So the, the first payment would begin in fiscal year 27.
But the loan, loaning party sequencing, Vernon Hills one, Gurnee two, three is additional to the agreement, four is Vernon Hills.
Right.
Can I say that, is that by year, or is that just sequencing?
It's going to be based on need.
Or need?
Need.
So it could be less than?
Could be in two.
So, so in the IGA.
After the first one?
In the IGA, we would be committing to up to $2 million within that time period for a 10-year term at, at a rate. Now, the rates for discussion for the board, this was a request from the transition committee. My, my role here is to present this to the board and provide feedback to that, to that committee. To answer your question, trustee Schenk, we would need the interest rate ironed out in this IGA upfront. We, we wouldn't be able to apply that a year from now or, or two years from now.
So on the 2 million, you can't separate 1 million, 1 million?
We could have, we could have that in the IGA, but we, we couldn't leave that open-ended without having that ironed out in the agreement.
So here's my question, what happens if we didn't give the money hypothetically? Chief Kreese? What would happen, would you not be able to hire an executive director, would there be things that could not be done now?
Right, right, we, correct. We, we have a paper organization now with no employees.
Right.
With no way to pay expenses.
Right.
And before this organization is going to be in a position to collect charges or have new surcharge funds provided to it, there, we got to get up to speed. And so between now and go date, we've got to operate.
Okay. So that being said, yeah, I'm, I'm fully in favor in, you know, working it out. I understand the dollars here, I understand that we're in the, a great position, but this is an absolute necessity as Chief Kreese has already, you know, at previous meetings, this, we, we can't handicap this situation. And, and since we are in a position to do it, we have to do it. That's my position.
No, I would agree with you. I would agree.
I don't need to, I don't need to break it down financially. You just got to do it, and, you know, if we, if you want to tweak it to some degree, that's fine, but I'm not worried about rate return. Against the situation.
Certainly, certainly it has to be done, it's just a question of who's, who's doing it.
Well, it's going to be.
And we take it on faith that.
That's the reality.
That, that, that is the reality.
Reality.
Well, we're taking on faith that that's the reality of the other communities, that.
It is.
That we're the only ones that.
I think it's pretty cut and dry.
That.
Yeah.
I, I would imagine they would have said that at, at the outset, that they're just not in a position.
I'm sorry, sir, I, I don't understand your.
Well, I'm, I'm saying that the other communities, other than Gurnee, have already said that they're really not in, in a position to.
That, that is correct. Yeah, that, that is correct. We, we've, this has been communicated to all of the LakeCom partners. It's worth reminding, particularly for someone that may be watching this and hasn't watched any of the previous, that the transition, this is really a five-year transition of cost because a lot of our member jurisdictions that are joining are seeing a significant increase in their expenses for 911 services. We are one of those jurisdictions that will, will see a decrease in our, our expenses, as is Gurnee. And so that is part of the reason that perhaps we're, we're in a position. And, and I'm, I'm a little hesitant to, you know, we've come to this from the beginning with a public safety focus. This is not about how can Vernon Hills spend less money.
Sure.
But as a result of a public safety focus and the state of today's current economic, how things have been put together in, 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 in Lake County over many years, Vernon Hills is one of those jurisdictions that will be spending less money every year going forward because of this transition.
I believe that really this has been made up of a variety of people, but technically, chief, you've been a big hit on this. Realistically, with things to go forward, I would put the money in and no interest-wise. People then hopefully will follow because exactly what you stated. Things aren't going to get cheaper in the long run on things, it's going to get more expensive. This program will be a group or a co-op, and it's going to be serving the community very well. So there is some risk to it, but I'm willing to take it.
So you're not looking for any action from?
You're not looking for any action from us tonight, just?
We're, we're looking for consensus on the proposed terms and conditions. Our, my next step is to take that feedback to the transition committee at LakeCom. From there, they're going to draft an IGA that includes Vernon Hills and any other.
That would come back to us in two weeks.
Correct. Potentially as early as two weeks, it, it could be our, our August meeting. But it, the, the way it's drafted now is the first draw request, because they want to get going, could be as early as September 1st.
Okay, then in that case, trustee Schenk? Trustee Takaoaka?
Yeah.
Trustee Markwart?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay. I have one quick comment to make, so when, when.
I got a comment, too.
Oh, and.
Oh, sorry, Ron.
And mayor, did you ask him?
Yeah. So I was just.
Yeah. My, my question is now, like for our existing dispatch center, what tax do we get to help pay for that service? Is that from the 911 tax on everybody's phone bill?
Yes, that's correct.
And how much is that generally a year?
Just over $500,000 for the Vernon Hills portion. And then our partner Libertyville, through their annual contribution for dispatch services we provide, provides there about $500,000 as well as another 400, $500,000 in funds from their general fund. So they give us a million plus the 500,000 from our ETSB revenues. And then our general fund owns the rest.
Does that currently basically pay for the whole operation?
That and our general fund, our general fund subsidizes the dispatch fund.
How much?
So we add something to the 500,000?
Yes. So we've been running about 2.3 million for total expenditures. So the village has been contributing on average 500-plus thousand a year.
That's going to be my.
So 1.1? Our contribution's about a million dollars?
1.1, I. Yeah, a little bit, little bit more than that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mayor, you're raising a good point, if I could clarify, maybe this is where you were going. If not, I'm happy to clarify further, but that revenue stream that's coming in from the state is going to continue to come in to Vernon Hills as revenue until LakeCom is operational. And that's the case for all of our partners. And because of that is why we have this gap needing of transitional costs. So all of our partners continue to receive those funds, we continue to receive those funds because we continue to have current expenses. Eventually, through this transition, all of those funds are going to be, what's the right word, consolidated into a new J E T S B of Lake County, which is one of the IGAs that you approved at last meeting. And all of those revenues will offset the expenses of LakeCom as an entire entity going forward. But that's a good, solid year of transition ahead of us before there's even a single ounce of revenue coming into LakeCom.
Yeah, okay, well, we obviously. Mike, you want to vote on this tonight?
No, we don't, we don't, we don't need to vote.
Yeah, we don't need to vote, but just the consensus that.
And you're in favor of going forward with this, correct, mayor?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm fine.
Okay.
I, I did want to make a comment. You know, we have to take into account that once LakeCom is up operational and they're getting their revenue from the 911 charges and, you know, we're, we're carrying other areas, we're, our share that we pay now is significantly more than probably what it really should be. So we're actually going to have a savings coming forward. Granted, our share to LakeCom will be something, but it's not going to be what it is now. Not even close from our general fund, I'm assuming, and, because they're consolidating all the 911 revenue. So we're going to be still, you know, in the black here, not, you know, I, I, we're going to have a savings at, at the end of the day, even if we give the loan, so it's, it's going to, it's going to offset the loan and still have the same service, basically, right?
Yeah.
And it's still a loan and they're paying us back, so it's.
In fact, better service. But yes, you're, you're right, there is, there is incremental savings every year increasing on Vernon Hills' side of the account from a, from a financial.
Because, right, because we carry it, we have, we carry a heavier load, let's say.
Today we are.
Today.
And today the other PSAPs are, and this new LakeCom model really levels the playing field through a, a system of sharing the cost in a much more equitable fashion.
All right, two weeks, we'll see the IGA.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, anything else tonight?
No, that's it for the committee and there, there'll be no closed session this evening.
No closed session, all right, then is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Motion.
Second. Okay, motion of second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Honest?
All right, we are finished and thank you.
So all a good night.
Okay, good night, everyone.
Good night, Ryder. It was good seeing you the other day.
Were you golfing Thursday?
Yeah.
All right.